All right, we'll call the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five council work meeting this quarter.
Make motion to adopt the agenda.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, twenty twenty-six budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The two thousand twenty-six budget process commenced on January second with the creation of our budget model. A series of other items were completed February through June as outlined above. And then based on inputs from the city council, department heads, and the union contract, the budget book was prepared for the city council to review at tonight's meeting. Again, the two thousand twenty-six general fund expenditures are proposed to increase by four hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred dollars, or seven percent from two thousand twenty-five. The two thousand twenty-six budget model currently reflects the following expenditure inputs, which are the primary drivers of that overall increase. Under salaries and benefits, an eight percent coal increase for nine union, thirteen non-union, and forty paid-on-call firefighters. Again, this is based on the Minnesota Public Employees Association's labor agreement that was approved at your June ninth city council meeting. Under contracted services, your law enforcement contract is proposed to increase by a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And again, we have representatives from Anoka County that will go line by line on their budget. The city attorney contract is proposed to increase by ten thousand dollars. The metro Ainet contract is proposed to increase by thirteen thousand dollars. Your audit contract is proposed to increase by two thousand dollars. Elections, again, this is an election year in two thousand twenty-six, is proposed to increase by twenty-one thousand. Under transfers, again, transfers within our general fund budget, the equipment replacement fund, we're proposing to increase those transfers for twenty-two thousand dollars. Street capital fund, proposing to increase that transfer by fifty thousand dollars. Under part capital fund, we're proposing to increase those by ten thousand dollars.
Hey, Mike, I got a question.
Sure.
On the election part of it, what was the normal cost? I couldn't find it anywhere.
The...
It's an increase of twenty-one thousand, so what was it, you know?
Last election, it was sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand?
It's in the book there, so.
I didn't see it.
Too much in the book.
And then under other, we are budgeting a twenty-four thousand dollar increase, or a new line item for the Minnesota paid leave program. That's going to be implemented and mandated by the state of Minnesota, starting in two thousand twenty-six. There's also a line item within your budget, proposed budget, of forty thousand dollars for Civic Plus module implementation. Again, we're still in, still in a little bit of a research mode for that, but we've put in forty thousand dollars for modules.
For what is that?
Civic Plus modules. I believe...
How is that software?
That's that new software program that you guys were talking about.
Right.
I was wondering where that was in here.
Yeah, that will help in terms of the website changes that we're going to have, and people being able to search information, things like that. Recording social media, which is a requirement by law, this does that for you. There's, there's about four, I believe, four different modules that we're looking at right now of seven or eight, so.
I thought it was going to be way more expensive than forty K, though.
Well, the full amount's eighty, but we kind of looked at needs versus wants and said, okay, this is kind of what we need here, so.
Okay.
Again, that expenditure increase would then result in a corresponding levy increase, general tax levy, levy and debt service levy of three point eight percent, or two hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred dollars in order to balance the two thousand twenty-six budget. Again, please note that the city would be using two hundred thousand dollars in accumulated general fund balance and initializing a one hundred thousand dollar transfer from the water fund to the two thousand fourteen A debt service fund in order to balance the two thousand twenty-six budget. Again, I just wanted to highlight that there are five different components to the city budget, the general fund, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital project funds, and enterprise funds. The main focus of tonight's meeting is the general fund, as it captures all expenditures involved with general government, community development, public safety, public works, engineering, risk management, and transfers. We have representatives from each of those departments here tonight in order to provide a brief overview of their budgets and to answer any questions the council may have.
Can I ask a quick question before we go in?
Sure.
All the contracts that we signed, the police, the legal, the attorneys, did those contracts include the monies that are increasing? Or is this an additional increase to those contracts?
Yep, so each one of those contracts is going to be different. The increase in the Anoka County contract is going to be new for two thousand twenty-six and in, embedded in this model for two thousand twenty-six. Your attorney contract actually is only running through the first five months of two thousand twenty-six. So one of the, you know, I guess, work items that Matt will be bringing forth is to examine if you wanted to bring that out for bid, to see if you wanted to...
I think we do.
Yep, so again, that goes through the first five months of two thousand twenty-six, and then there's estimate, estimates basically based upon prior activity in order to kind of fill in your two thousand twenty-six budget for the attorney fees.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. Good question, thank you. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our representatives from the law enforcement department. We have Paul Lenzmeyer and Derek Peters here from Anoka County, so.
And what pages are those on? Can you...
This is page twenty-nine of your budget book.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everyone again in a little bit different capacity than usual on our monthly council meetings. But as you all know, I'm Lieutenant Derek Peters with the sheriff's office. I have the distinct pleasure of presenting the two thousand twenty-six law enforcement contract this year. But before I start, off to my right, I think Mike pretty much hit on it, but I have three representatives that are here with me. All three of them have played a huge role in putting us together and making sense for people like me who is just not usually a numbers guy. So Paul Lenzmeyer, commander, Brent Erickson, commander, and Chief Deputy Bill Jacobson. And on behalf of the four of us, we want to say thank you for allowing us to come up here and present the contract, and thank you for your arduous support throughout the years. We've never gotten unsupported by the city, and I think it shows in our work product and what we deliver out on the road day to day. So thank you to each and every one of you, and without further ado, I'll get straight into it. I plan on doing this line by line, and if you guys have questions as we move forward, you can stop me, otherwise I'll just stand for questions at the end. But two thousand twenty-six brought a few changes for us on the contract side of things. The deputies were awarded a new contract, which included a five percent wage increase. We're going to see that over the next three years, so it was a five, five, and three. And our contracts will reflect that as we move forward throughout the future here in that regard. As you can see, under personnel A for sworn deputy sheriff, we have seven point six deputies at nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per month. That's just strictly on wages. The reason why it's seven point six is that we have six deputies that are assigned to this contract. We have two that are working on the day shift side of things, two that work mid-shift, and then two that work in the over, overnight shifts, one on each rotation, rotation one and two. The reason why we build in that seven point six, or that one point six eight technically, is to account for any vacations, sick leave, and all the other things that we need to cover so that we have coverage twenty-four seven, three sixty-five throughout the city. In addition to what we've got this year, we have ten hours of overtime that we've built into the contract. That's a change from previous years of seven hours of overtime, simply because we have state mandated trainings, which would include the racial biases trainings, driving training, other trainings that we must attend as law enforcement. So we built that into each one of our contracts, ten hours of overtime, instead of the seven that we, that we're used to in the past, so we've seen an increase there as well. Moving down on the list here, you'll see all of the benefits that are standard for what we're seeing in law enforcement here with the PERA, the Medicaid, the severance allowance, and the unemployed compensation, things of that nature. We've seen a bit of an increase there. We didn't see any changes on the life insurance side of things. That brings our total cost for personnel at one million three hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars, so. Obviously, you can also see we don't have any sworn CSO coverage here, which is represented by the zero on our balance sheet. So that's been continuation of, I think, two or three years ago when we got rid of the, the CSO contract. So that is currently where we stand here for two thousand twenty-six. Moving into vehicles, the city of East Bethel pays for two cars. We have one car that runs twenty-four seven, so that's the car that, that runs during the day shift hours from six to six, and then they'll run the night shift from six to six. So that car is running twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. The power car, which basically adds to that power, or to that, to that day shift car that works those overlapping hours, is a twelve-hour car, and that's going to be running two thirty AM, or two thirty PM to two thirty AM. Our twenty-four hour car gets replaced every third year, I'm sorry, gets replaced every other year, while the twelve-hour car gets replaced every third year. So that's articulated in our sheet here at point eight three for vehicles, instead of one. We don't charge the city for one vehicle every single year because we're usually rotating through, when we're, when we're actually purchasing those cars. But we leave that number at point eight three, which this year totals forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty, simply to keep the contract consistent so that on years that we have replacements or need replacements, it's not increasing, it's not decreasing drastically. State pricing on those vehicles for our contracts has gone up. So if you look on the right side of the sheet there, the cost for that vehicle in two thousand twenty-six has actually been at fifty-five thousand. But as stated earlier, that point eight three brings that total down to forty-five thousand six hundred and fifty for the purchase of a new SUV in our city here. Directing your attention further down on the sheet, under vehicles there, you'll see the top, total cost for maintenance of our squads is fifty-two thousand five hundred, which includes all the maintenance costs associated with the vehicle's usage. And that includes both of, both the power and the regular contract car. So we come to that figure based on average mileage per squads, which is combined per year seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand miles. We charge our contracts point seven per miles per the IRS reimbursement figures. So if you, if you do the math on that, seventy-five thousand times point seven equals the fifty-two thousand five hundred that you see directly across from number one there, vehicle. Moving down further there, emergency communications and equipment fees, that's at thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighteen. That's going to include our body worn cameras, our portable radios for the deputies, the mobile radios in the squad cars, the miscellaneous communication equipment that we have to purchase and restock throughout the year, shoulder mics, batteries, things of that nature, and then fleet cameras at approximately forty-five hundred dollars per year.
Do those only last one year, you replace them every year, all that stuff?
Not, not every year, but those batteries can go, depending on how much they're used. So people on specialty units that tend to use their radios a lot more frequently, people that leave their radios on, the lifespan of those lithium ion batteries are decreased greatly, so we build that into the cost of our contract every year so that we can have the proper equipment to outfit our folks. The emergency vehicle equipment replacement fee is included just below that. That's, that's at three thousand dollars, and that's, that's squad equipment, right? So we have, we have medical supplies in there, we have bunkers, we have other things that we need to serve the public, just odds and ends type things that, that we do charge the contracts for, which is what's indicative there. So if you break that down, it's fifteen hundred per car, times two is three thousand for both of our cars there.
So can I ask another question now?
Yep.
If I, if I don't ask, I'll forget.
That's okay.
If you don't use the three thousand dollars, do you, do we not pay it, or do we pay it no matter what? Whether you use it or not?
No, in this case, in this case, as it's included in the contract, that asks the city to pay for that, just simply so that we can get those things purchased beforehand. We don't have to worry about back billing or charging the city later if we need more equipment. So it's a standard flat fee that we're going to be charging all of our contracts to. That equipment is, is imperative to our operation. It's very important for us to have those miscellaneous items in the car so that the car is properly stocked. Otherwise, you know, we run out of rubber gloves, or we run out of any other supplies that we may need and could create issues when we're actively dealing with scenes out on the road, so. Further down on that list there, insurance costs for each car combined is seven thousand dollars, and then phones for our deputies in East Bethel per year totals forty-five hundred. The phones are critical to our operation, obviously, as you all know. Emails, voicemails, communication with attorneys, communication with the public. That's where that bill, or that's where that price point will stand for those, those deputies in two thousand twenty-six. Administrative costs on number three, our PSDs costs, which is our CAD system, and our APS maintenance costs have gone up. We've seen a slight increase there. The PSDs is our CAD system, so the computer aided dispatch, all the networking and all the software that's included in that package has gone up this year. That is a price point that's predetermined by JALIC, our joint law enforcement council. So again, that's another cost of our services that's required for us to, to do business the way that we have been. Unfortunately, it's risen, but again, a critical element of our operational status as it pertains to day-to-day activities on the road. APS stuff, that stands for automated pond system. We actually use the LEED system, so LEEDs is an APS system. So what it does, it allows us to follow up on theft cases, it allows us to track scrap metal, it allows us to track items that were pawned. It allows us to follow up on those theft cases that usually filter their way down to patrol investigations after our deputies have answered that first nine-one-one call out on, out on the street. So very critical software that's imperative to our success. We can't follow up without that software. It's very important that we have the support of, you know, council and everyone else out there in, in maintaining these systems, because without it, we can go dead end on some of these leads that we get. So it's a very easy system for us to utilize. You sign in, you log in, you type in what you're looking for, and boom, you got your results. So it's a great tool for us. Number, numer, number, or letter B, excuse me. Administrative clerical substation computer line charges have been listed at a hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Those are also up this year, just based on the fact that we had that wage adjustment at the very first side of, at the very top for our personnel there. That number is figured on ten percent of our personnel costs at one million three hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. That includes staff records, staff, record staff and support staff included, is included in that. So whenever we take reports, whenever we need processing paperwork on the backend of things, that administrative fee is what's included here. That is what we're paying those folks to do, so process our day-to-day activities, whether it's in East Bethel or, or somewhere else, that's, that's on that contract too. So that's an administrative fee, ten, ten percent of personnel costs flat across the board. So that also, that bottom line total also includes thirty-eight, thirty, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-dollar charge, which is a standard county IT charge that county IT determines for us, which covers our phone lines and computer services in the substation. So it's a brief overview of, of what I have for council this evening, but I'm ready to stand for any questions, and like I said, I've got the brain tree behind me. So if I don't know the question, I'll phone a friend, and we can get through this, so. Any questions that I can answer for anybody on what I have?
I do have one more question. So we get taxed from Anoka County for some of this, for police administrative, for different, for the new building they have on Hanson, the...
New call center.
The call center. The, and I feel like we might be getting double taxed, like, are you, do you guys reimburse the county then for what we pay you, or how does that work? Because some of these things seem like it should be the county taxing us for, and I feel like they are taxing us for some of this stuff.
Sure, so from my understanding, the twenty, twenty-hundred's new building is, that's a county building that has nothing to do with the sheriff's office. So what you're receiving from them is actually from the county, not the sheriff's office specifically. And to answer your question of whether or not we reimburse, I'm not aware of that. I don't think that we do. I, I don't, I'm not aware of any sort of reimbursement on that side of things, but...
Mayor and council, my name is Bill Jacobson, I serve as the chief deputy. Councilman, I'll try to answer your question a little bit. So every, every city in Anoka County does, part of the county levy does include costs for the sheriff's office, but those are our countywide service costs. So those include things, as you mentioned, the nine-one-one center, our justice services division, which pays for civil process, paper service, eviction, stuff like that. It accounts for our jail division, which is our largest division. We have approximately eighty, some deputies that work in the jail. Our SWAT team, our reserve unit, we have a marine unit that patrols our waterways. We have a number of other specialty units. We have like a mobile field force team that can respond if there are incidents involving, you know, mass sort of public demonstrations to keep people safe. So we have basically two types of service. We have services that the entire county gets, and that's part of that county levy you see, and then services at the police level for each city. So for example, the city of Blaine, they have their own police department, they pay their own police department. But when we have county services in Blaine, some other examples are like our criminal investigations division. They handle death investigations, sexual assaults, major crimes. Our crime scene unit comes out, our, our forensic lab, those are those costs. The costs, like here, are the cost to have deputies on the front lines, patrolling your community and keeping your community safe. So things like, you know, ha, having traffic enforcement call response, you know, having, having sort of directed patrol wherever the community feels it's needed. So there's kind of like two separate, two separate types of service happening. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I was mostly considering the computer type stuff, because I thought that was integrated with the county, and I, honestly, I don't know, so I'm asking.
Yeah, councilman, but that's a fair question, a question we ask. So we, we basically, when we build our, our budget on a very similar timeline that the city builds their budget, we basically get, we, we get a bill from county IT that comes to us. So for the cities that have squad cars with computers in them, that's what the county charges us to maintain those computers, modems, that technology. So when we offer a contract, we have to include those costs, because if a computer breaks down in a squad car, we, we wouldn't call your IT department. We call ours, and they come out and fix it, so. And I tell you, I don't know, has anyone been in a police car recently in the front seat of a police car to look the technology in the police cars? I don't know, some, some of the folks that have been, we've all been around a while, we've all been cops for a while. The amount of technology in police cars is crazy right now. You've got the cameras, the GPS, you've got license plate readers, you've got so much technology that I tell you, the, the, the software support and the IT support that we need these days to get our job done. I don't know, you guys, we've all done pen and paper patrol. I don't, I don't know that our deputies these days have ever experienced pen and paper patrol, but man, the, the technology is pretty, pretty impressive out there, so, you know, we have, we have to support it. So hopefully that answers your question a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And yeah, we're happy to stand for any other questions or any specifics about the details of the contract.
I do have a question for you. I'm trying to figure out in my head if we have a car that's out there twenty-four seven, and one that's twelve hours times seven, you know, for the week. When I do the numbers on that, I come up with, you know, a hundred and sixty-eight hours of full-time work that that car is twenty-four seven across the board, and along with eighty-four for the twelve. And if you take those forty hours, when you add them all up, it, it equals six point three officers, basically, of full-time work. So I'm wondering where you get the seven point six deputies. It, you know, it's not like adding up in my head here or on paper. So I'm trying to figure out where the increase is there for hours. If there's only so many hours that you can put into a car...
Sure.
You know, why are we, why are we multiplying that out?
Yeah, so the, the short answer is, you're, you're getting, you're getting cars that you're not being charged for. But I can, Paul, I don't know if you want to comment a little more on that?
Paul Lenzmeyer, commander of the patrol division. So you're talking about the seven point six, right?
Right.
Versus the six deputies that you have. Lieutenant Peters touched on it a little bit, but that seven point six represents additional relief cars built into the schedules to accommodate for sick leave, vacation, E S S T time. Anytime your core six have training, we backfill with the deputy on, on the road. So you guys don't lapse in any type of coverage.
Okay.
In some cases, like a city police department, let's say their, their maximum of our six deputies, if their deputy calls in sick, they're down, down five, right? But with you, with that seven point six, that gives you an additional one point six that offers into the relief spot to cover those vacancies throughout the year.
Okay. Is that where the county wide card comes in?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else? I think I used up one lifeline, or is that two? I don't, I don't know, I don't know. If nobody else has any questions, I'll stop talking. But if you guys need something, please feel free to reach out, and if I don't know the answer, I'll find it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks. Thanks for coming out, guys. Thanks for what you do.
All right, we're going to be moving right along to the fire department. Fire department budget is proposed to increase by seven percent, or seventy-three thousand dollars. The primary drivers of that increase are salaries and added paid-on-call staff and equipment. With that, I'll hand it over to Jeff Ciloca of the fire department.
And what page?
We are looking at page thirty-one.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me. As Mike pointed out, our budget's going up by about seven percent. A large part of that is the wage increase. We are also in the process of adding numerous personnel. We currently have seven that are in the pipeline for background checks, which come with added cost of training and equipment and that kind of stuff. A few of the larger line items that, on top of the wages that we are looking at addressing are, are turnout gear. All of that was purchased in the year twenty twenty, and it's all going to be coming due or expiring by twenty thirty, which means without purchasing a large amount in twenty twenty-nine, we're going to start to phase in new gear and build up some of our reserves, but make it so that it's not a huge purchase in, in twenty twenty-nine. Some of the other stuff, we're looking at replacing some small tools to include different types of circular saws that we would use on different car accidents and, and medical, or not medical, but nine-one-one responses. And then the other thing is leaning into training to include emergency management training, addressing council concerns that I've been told and understood to prepare the E O P and continue to move that forward. From, from what I can gather from previous years, those are the three biggest line item increases. There haven't been, everything else seems to be adjusted to cover for inflation. There are things that we're trying to start to plan for in the future, to start to make sure, and as I have more time, I'll dive into the C I P and stuff, make sure we have enough money allocated for vehicle replacements, SCVAs, radios, and all that kind of stuff. We'll, we'll be addressing that in the coming years. I don't have as detailed a presentation as the police department, but...
Right behind you.
I, I would offer, or open it up to any questions as far as anything that you see that you either don't have all the information on, or questions have come up.
Well, you know, I have questions. I'm going to start with the fire pension contribution, because it's been fourteen thousand for years, and, and twenty-six is going to sixteen thousand, why is that? I mean, it's, it's not a lot, but I just noticed the difference in the consistency, but now it's changed.
If I remember correctly, that's the two percent money, or...
Yeah, actually, it's, historically, it's been based on the number of proposed paid-on-call firefighters that the unit's going to have during that budget year. So as we increase the number of paid-on-call firefighters, that number increases. Again, the way it's been done... Again, the way it's been done in the past is four hundred dollars times the amount of paid-on-call firefighters. So that is the two thousand dollar increase that you're seeing.
All right, and then my next thing is on the clothing and personal equipment because when I did meet with you, you showed me how they're expiring. And this twenty thousand dollar increase, or thereabouts, is that for a portion of them, or is that, are you, is that for a whole bunch of them at once? Because I was thinking what you were saying, yeah, let's buy a few this year, a few next year, a few the following year, so that they all don't expire at the same time.
So each set of turnout gear, we're waiting on the official quote, but it was estimated to be about thirty-two hundred dollars per set.
Okay.
So that does factor in purchasing some, not all, at one time.
Okay.
Does that? And that is just the coat and pants that we wear? That does not include the helmet, boots, gloves, hoods, a lot of stuff that goes on with that. Not all of that has to be replaced right away. Again, that's something that we're going to have to inventory and see where we stand. But that's where that increase comes from, so that we can start to phase that in.
Okay, yeah, because I, I know you guys, it's OSHA mandated, you have to replace that. But I was just wanting to make sure you're doing a little bit at a time, so it's not, you're not having to buy forty at once. And I didn't know what this cost represented.
I think part of this is back in, when we had COVID, firefighters were to get contaminated, we went out and bought second sets for everybody. So they had two sets of gear at that time. So that will come into effect eventually, where one set's going to need to be replaced for all firefighters.
Yes, and that's what we're starting to address.
Yeah. And it was part of the COVID deal.
My final question is, why is there a ten thousand dollar increase for conference meetings? Have the fees increased, or are there additional conferences you guys are going to be going to? It's the very bottom, almost the very bottom.
So conference meetings is, is the training aspect. So again, we're going to be leaning into that. We're going to be using that to make sure that our personnel are certified where they need to be, that we can bring in outside instructors as needed, so that we have the best training possible for our personnel. There is, part of that is reimbursed through the M B F T E. I haven't seen what that figure is for this year. I believe last year.
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand, we'll say eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Yep.
But the state has not set the reimbursement per firefighter for this year as of yet.
Got it. Okay, that's all my questions.
How many firefighters do we have right now?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. So with the addition, if we recruit seven more, it's thirty-four?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, St. Francis math.
It's okay.
Do we have a target goal for recruitment? Do, is thirty-five going to be adequate if all these members work out? Or are we looking to increase it to forty?
So this is set at forty, which is where that increase comes from in the, in the pension that council member Urkel talked about. With the addition of seven, I've, we have potential retirements of long-tenured members. So even if we have all seven maintain and work out long-term, we're still expecting to have retirements. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, and I don't want to put out a number, but.
But it's something that will happen eventually.
Yes, we're also working, continuing to work on recruitment and retention. We're working on putting out a continuous posting on the job webs, or on the city's website, as well as utilizing the marquee that's on sixty-five, and continuing to push our message of, you know, if you're interested, come out. We're going to let you know what we stand for, who we are, why we're here, and how you can contribute to, to the community through the fire department.
Okay, so this budget does take into consideration recruits up to, I think you said forty individuals?
Yeah, I, I believe actually it was, it's forty, correct?
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's covered.
Yeah, as far as kind of projecting what the paid-on-call firefighter salary line item is, it's kind of a moving target because it's not only based upon the number of employees we have or paid-on-call firefighters, it's also based on the number of calls, right? So it's not as easy as forecasting what our full-time staff is. It's more based upon how many calls they're going to have and then how many firefighters we have too. So what we generally do is we take kind of what a histor, history has kind of shown us as far as an amount, and then inflate it by whatever the cost of living increase was for the, the union contract, so.
Okay.
Chief, we are working on them calls to reduce.
We are also working on that.
So that can help also?
Yep, we are working to reduce the amount of calls that we go to by evaluating the greatest impact that we can have. So that, that will also have an impact on that final line item, but it is still a moving target. We could reduce it by that money, and it could go up by that many just based on the serious calls.
True. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Nice job.
Thanks, chief.
Moving right ahead, we're going to pass it over to Nate Ashford. He's our public works manager. He's going to touch on the streets and park maintenance departments. That's page thirty-eight of your budget book.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I've got seven budgets here. Mike likes to hear that, but go through them pretty quick. If there are any questions, feel free to interrupt at any time at any of these. For the most part, all of these, there's really no big changes on there besides the wages portion. So there's not a lot of stuff to highlight. But the first one is the park maintenance budget. This covers all the maintenance of our city parks, all of our grounds and all of our buildings, a few right-of-ways that we mow and maintain with our lawnmowers. If you go to page forty-three, that's kind of the graph that shows all of our different increases on there. But we've just bumped up a couple items, some safety supplies. That includes all the P P E for the employees. And then line item two-twenty-three is our building repairs budget. We bumped that up fifteen hundred dollars to help cover the cost of some increases and things like irrigation repairs to buildings, that kind of stuff. So overall, not a big change in that, in that budget.
Nate, I got a question on the two-twelve motor pool fuels. And as of six months, we use four thousand one hundred and four dollars, and our budget is twenty-four thousand. So will we be using all that towards the end of the year?
No, nope. So a lot of that is because we didn't have to plow much this winter. These two budgets, the street maintenance and the park maintenance are kind of, there's a lot of stuff that goes between the two of them. We have four employees, four of them get coded to this department, four of them get coded to the street maintenance. Some of our vehicles that we plow with actually get coded to this too. So the fuel that we use for those vehicles for plowing comes out of this parks budget. Whatever we don't spend goes back into the general fund, and that's what we're using. The last few years, we've had pretty big surpluses, and that's what we're using to offset the budget this year. Was it two hundred thousand, I think, is what we're using? So whatever we don't use goes back in there. But with both these budgets, winter storms have a big, there's a lot of variability in what we end up spending, so.
Okay.
We try and keep it as low as possible. We try not to spend everything out of there and let it go back into the general fund.
I was just questioning it because there was a big difference.
Yeah, we're way ahead this year, so, knock on wood, we got a nice fall and winter this year too.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the park maintenance operations?
Well, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Why are we budgeting twenty-four thousand and not the seventeen or eighteen thousand from what we actually used in twenty-twenty-four? Why, why is it such a big increase?
For the same line, line item?
Yes, the same line item.
So if you go back to twenty-twenty-three, that was when we had a bad winter.
Yeah.
And we were, we were pushing up against that. So we kind of budgeted a little bit high to cover it. We don't want to be searching for money. You'd rather have a little bit left over and put it back into the general fund for the next year, so. Odds are, we're going to be below it on that line item, but there's, like I said, there's a big variability. If we have a tornado or storm come through, eat that up real quick, so.
Yeah, I think the general strategy when it comes to budget is you want to, you want to make sure that you're covered, and you're kind of taking a worst-case scenario on some of these line items from a expenditure standpoint. And then on the revenue standpoint, you want to be conservative. Again, these are budgets. You don't want to come at the end of the year and be ran out of money. So kind of conservative on the revenue side. And then when you're budgeting for expenditures, if you don't have an exact number that someone's giving you for a contract, it's more variability depending on a bunch of events, you want to make sure that it's based on a worst-case scenario or something that you can kind of base on what's done in prior years. So that's kind of where that number's coming from. Like in two thousand twenty-three, we did spend roughly that twenty-four thousand dollar mark, so that's where that budget was set, so.
Yeah, I get that, and I understand it. But there's also, all these little things are nickel and diming up the levy too, so there's that.
Yep, that's a good point.
Yeah, we don't overtax. Part of that for motor fuels specifically is the last two winters have been very mild.
Right.
And that's why those other two are so low. I think twenty-four is, is going to be closer to a normal year, but like you said, we don't want to overtax too. But it goes back into the general fund, and it's helping pay this year's levy.
That's true.
And that's, and that's a good point. I think Nate kind of hit it right on the head there with, anything that is saved within these budgets is just put into our general fund balance, and then that goes, we can use that then to offset the levy increase moving into two thousand twenty-six, which we have done, I believe, the last three years. So we're using, again, two hundred thousand dollars in accumulated money that wasn't spent to lessen that levy. So it's, it's, it's definitely, it's been a useful tool, I guess, as we've moved forward through these budgets, so.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? Moving on, we'll go to the street maintenance budget. This covers all of our work that, that retains to the streets, the stormwater system, any of that kind of stuff. There again, on page forty-nine, kind of broke down everything, but there's not a lot of difference in any increases in there besides the fuel, besides the labor. There again, the fuel, same, same issue there on line two-twelve. If you look back to two thousand twenty-three, that's kind of our, one we base it on. But with this one, we have some big variability in salt, road salt with years without, without plowing. Same with some of our repairs on the trucks. Because the last couple of years, we've had mild winters, we've pushed back the replacements on those plow trucks a couple of years, so that's going to save the city money as well. No really big increases there. We've got a little bit in line item two-twenty-one. That's repairs to vehicles that we take care of in-house. We're trying to do more and more of that over the years, and we've been able to accomplish that. The pricing for parts has gone up a lot too, so all the, all the regular replacement items on a vehicle has seen increases. We did bump up, as Mike mentioned earlier, too, the, the equipment replacement transfer fee. I'll go over that at the end, but yeah, not a lot of, nothing else has really changed in that, in that budget, so. Any questions on any of that?
No, but I do have a question. Is this the one where, when, so when roads are being resurfaced, the material used is made out of oil and stuff, and that price is going down? So are, are costs somewhere in here going down because of that going down, or not?
Most of those projects come out of the street capital fund, and.
Not this fund?
Yeah, this is more just maintenance. There's a little bit of savings in our patching material, but it's not very significant. And yeah, most of that comes out of the street capital fund and the state aid fund, so yeah.
Okay.
That's where you see savings on those.
Thanks.
Our salt prices for this year, they went up four percent, so not a huge increase. Ninety-nine dollars a ton, this year it'll be a hundred and three dollars a ton, so. We're, we have a full salt shed to start out the year, so we've lowered our purchase amounts. We're going to have some savings there, at least to get us into two thousand twenty-six, so. Any questions on the street maintenance budget?
I just want to talk to you about that salt deal. What, what depth of snow before you guys plow normally?
On our state aid roads, so our, anything over thirty-five miles or forty miles and above, we pretty much plow anytime there's snow covering it. Try and keep those clear all the time.
No matter if it's a half inch or?
Yeah, we try and, we'll come in on the weekends and scrape those off. It's safety, there are areas that are by the schools and the fire departments. We do those pretty much on any snowfall amount that, that's sticking and causing issues. Full neighborhood plows, technically, our snowplow policy has two inches, but it's usually an inch, inch and a half where we go out. And it kind of depends on what the forecast is. If it's going to be warming up, we might not go out if it's going to be.
So do you make that call?
I do, yep.
Okay, I was just curious. Thanks.
Any other questions on that one? A couple other ones that we do, I don't know if there's going to be any questions on them, but we handle the recycling operations. Most of this is funded through the grant we get from Anoka County, so there's, this is the enterprise fund. It's not, it doesn't use general tax, it's money. We use a lot of volunteers for this work from the Lions and the Eastfield Bandits. They do almost all the work at the recycle center.
What page is the recycling on?
If you go to page fifty-nine is the, is the chart. There's no, no increases on any of that, but kind of the big issue there is illegal dumping is, is kind of our biggest cost right now. People dropping off stuff that they shouldn't be, garbage, coaches, certain appliances. If they come out of an R V, they, they run on ammonia, and they're really expensive to get rid of, and those aren't included in what we take there, but we do get those there. We upgraded the camera system. We've been able to identify a few of them there, but that's a work in progress too, so. But the city ends up being on the hook for paying for that stuff.
So isn't there a cost for people to bring stuff? I mean, at the end of the month, recycling, where some things people have to pay. Are those revenues in here somewhere?
This is just the expenditure side. Mike's got the revenue side, I think, too.
Yeah, essentially, all of the, the main takeaway, I guess, on your recycling fund is all activities within recycling are covered through the grant. So anything that we do recycling-related is reimbursed by Anoka County.
The fees that we charge on the end of the month, that goes to the vendors. So the person who takes our tires, for example, we have to pay to get rid of those tires. It offsets.
Oh.
Our city's just kind of a passer. Same with fluorescent bulbs, electronics, things like that. We have a vendor that charges us back, and we pay them from what we collected.
Oh, I thought we were making a profit on that.
No. And I guess, I guess if you look at this, there's this line item that says fees for two thousand. Essentially, that is a donation at the recycling center. So if you dump off your oil, there's a drop box that collects dollars, and we.
That's our profit.
That's our profit, so.
Oh, I get it.
Yes.
But it's, it's one of the better recycling centers in Anoka County, so it gets a lot of praise. And I don't know if you guys know Dallas at all, and the Lions, they do a lot of work down there, so it's a big benefit to our city. Any other questions on the recycling? I'll run through the water and sewer expenditures just real quick. This is all funded by the users, so there again, it's a, it's an enterprise fund. The, the big change in the water fund is we just set up another category for water meters. In the past, we had built that, this is on page seventy. In the past, we had built that under utility maintenance supplies, and then we charged that back to the builders and developers for the water meters. So we don't actually, that, sometimes that number looks big, but all that gets billed back to the builders, so it doesn't cost the city or anything on those. That fund's doing well. We're using a hundred thousand of it this year to offset the levy. Operational-wise, it, it makes money for the city, so.
Yeah, I think one of the big takeaways on this budget here is we're implementing a new line item, and it's the last line item on here, it's that debt fund transfer. So essentially, again, if you take a look at the city budget, we know that salaries and benefits and the law enforcement contract make up the biggest part of your, your budget. So when those line items go up eight percent, and your levy is only going up three point eight percent, you kind of scratch your head. And one of the ways we were able to do that is taking some of these excess funds within your water fund that have been collected since the water and sewer system went in. Again, these are all the hookup charges, basically, that have been collected since the, the, the system went in, and now using those dollars to actually pay some of this debt. So again, we've implemented it here at a hundred thousand, so you don't have to levy as much. You're levying a hundred thousand dollars less, but then it gets expended right here in your water fund, so.
I'm confused because this looks like it's an expenditure and adding to the levy. I'm confused because this looks like it's an expenditure and adding to the levy a hundred thousand dollars, but you're saying it's coming from
Yep.
all the payments coming in.
Yep, so essentially
That's not making sense to me.
Yep, the payments happened actually in the past, so all these hookup charges that the residential units and the commercial units have paid over the course of the last ten years have been accumulated in this water fund. So now we're going to use a hundred thousand dollars of that to pay the debt service fund. So it'll, it will be an expenditure to the water fund, but
Not the levy.
A revenue to your debt service fund.
But again, it looks like it's adding to the levy amount is what I'm saying. It should be a negative in here or something. Shouldn't it, it's a takeaway?
Yep, I can show you.
Just real quick, do you, all of this budget is not coming from the levy. This is all coming from the user fund, so none of this is coming from the levy.
None of this is going into that?
Correct.
Oh, I get it.
This is all paid for by the users of the water system.
So, oh, okay.
It's an enterprise fund, so it's funded by itself, kind of separate from the levy.
Yep, so if we, we kind of skip to the back of the book again, kind of saying, okay, all these expenditures, what does it mean for your actual levy for the people that are getting taxed, right? It's an increase of three point eight percent. Well, again, your general side of the levy went up six percent. This two thousand fifteen A debt service went up three percent. But again, because we were able to basically transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the water fund to this debt service one, we were able to levy that hundred thousand dollars less, which then, you know.
I saw that. I, now I get it. Okay, all right.
These, these items are a little bit separate from the actual general fund stuff, but I just want to go over them so everybody's kind of on the same page in how they operate.
Yep.
The next one is the sewer budget. We don't really have a, we don't do a lot with that. We're mainly a collection system. We send it down to the Met Council plant. This is item seventy-four, and we're not making any changes really on there at all, so. We able to lower the loan payment a little bit, I think, on that one.
Yeah, I think one thing to note on this is, okay, so that your water fund is participating in paying back some of these external debt bond issues. Well, your sewer fund is participating or is paying down that reserve capacity loan. I think everyone's kind of familiar with that. We had capped at two million dollars, so you've got the water fund paying down this external debt to your bondholders, and then you've got your sewer fund participating or paying down the reserve capacity loan with the Met Council, so. That's what that loan payment and loan principle is all about.
Yeah, I do have some questions on this though, even though it's not really adding, like on page seventy-one, the mobile park, the base charge. Is that, it per month, one thousand one hundred ninety? Is that for the whole park or is that per house paying? That was a little confusing.
It's for the whole park, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the park charges each
Correct, yep, and we get that question all the time where they call us directly and ask what, you know, what their rate is, and we, we don't charge the individual customer. We charge the the park.
All right, and then on page seventy-two, you know, in two thousand sixteen, this professional services was twenty thousand dollars, and now it's up to like eighty-three thousand? What is that all about?
That's a great question. So essentially, since two thousand sixteen, I've been keeping track of how much the Met Council is charging the city to treat the wastewater. So in two thousand sixteen, if you look back or think back, we didn't have a very large customer base. So as customers are getting added to the system, essentially our flows are increasing, and the, what they're charging us is increasing. So essentially now we're up to, I guess, I'm not sure how many customers I have. I don't have it on the tip of my tongue, but basically, it's just due to the amount of customers now that we have on the system, so, and the flow that they're generating. So as we add customers, that number will just keep on going up.
Well, no wonder they want us to add ounces to that. Oh, my gosh, okay.
And there again, that's billed back to the users of the system they're paid for by the
And that's how we
They pay a monthly sewer charge to cover.
I get it.
Yeah. Good question, though.
Any other questions on those two? We got two more quick ones for you here, the ice arena fund. This is page seventy-five in your pamphlet, your booklet. So this is the same thing. It's funded by the users of the ice arena. We don't use general fund levy money at all. In fact, we actually transfer, we increased the amount from fifty-nine thousand seven hundred to sixty-seven thousand. So that goes back into the, into the general fund paid for by the users of the ice arena, so that actually helps lower our our levy. We do have, we were a little bit short on some of the ice rentals last year from Saint Francis Youth Hockey. They had a lot less teams involved in their, in their youth program, and then they have some co-ops with other cities. Their girls' high school team, for example, is half, Saint Francis, half Cambridge Isani, so they split their time between the two buildings. So it depends on where they have their games, who gets the the ice rentals and stuff like that. But we did rent to a lot more different organizations last year than we've ever had in the past, and we've increased our ad sales there too, so that's increased. And we increased our dry land floor activities. Looking into the future here, we do have a junior, a men's junior team that's going to maybe make Eastbelfo their home. If that's the case, we're going to have a lot more ice sold, and it's during the day and late at night when it's not going to affect our youth hockey and our high school team, so that's, uh, it's getting close to being finalized, but they've made that announcement already that they're going to be using Eastbelfo as their home ring, so. So that should increase revenue quite a bit at this facility. All the big repairs that are done there are funded from the this fund, so like the scoreboard, all that stuff is paid for by the users of the ice arena. We have a, try and build up this capital improvement fund. We've kind of been whittling the way at it. It's lowering, but as it stands right now, it's fully funded by the users of the ice arena, so.
Nate, when that, when and if that new league comes in, you want to let us know?
Yeah, yep. Their biggest concern was locker room space, so we're trying to sort of iron that part of it out, but we're kind of limited on the locker room space in that building, but.
Yeah, I thi- I think Nate did a good job explaining that too. One thing that happened last year, obviously, is we transitioned from games management, management to our own internal team, and I think that did two things positively for us. It basically increased our service satisfaction level to, I guess, the highest that I've ever seen, I guess, here. So just an exceptional job by our team maintaining the facility and servicing that entity. And then, again, we were able to actually bill the arena, the arena fund sixty-seven thousand dollars, basically for labor costs too, which helps bring down your overall levy as well, so. I think overall, that transition was extremely positive for the city.
Good to hear. Hey Nate, I got a question on this professional or this hockey team coming in.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that the community can get behind, go to the games?
Oh, absolutely.
And stuff like that?
They're going to have, they will have games during prime time, so that will cut in a little bit to some of the other ice times, but they're going to be fully concession stand. The youth hockey is going to run the concession stand during during these games, and yeah, it's a junior, men's junior team. They're pretty, uh, pretty good athletes that play in that, that level, so.
Awesome.
Yep. Yeah, we'll, we'll for sure hand them more information once we get closer and get everything dialed in, but it's looking good right now. If not, we can still fund with with what we have to. It's designed to run off the youth hockey, the high school teams and stuff like that, so. Any other questions on the arena? And lastly, just a quick overview of how our equipment replacement fund works. This is page eighty-eight. Each year we go through and look at our needs for the next five years and actually going out twenty, thirty years. We have a spreadsheet that we set up what equipment we need to replace, how much money we need to save. For two thousand twenty-six, we have a plow truck that's coming due for replacement. This was planned for this year, but if you remember last fall, we moved some stuff around to get rid of a couple diesel smaller trucks, and we pushed this truck back.
Didn't we just get a plow truck?
Um, we, we just took delivery on one. We ordered it in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. It takes two years once we actually make the order to get the truck. So if we order this one later this year, maybe November, December, it'll probably show up in twenty, late twenty-six, early twenty-seven.
I think the unique thing about this city, which I like, is that, again, we have a comprehensive listing of all the equipment that needs to be replaced, a schedule, and then that really formulates how much we need to save each year. So that's the kind of the first part of this approval process by the governing body or the city council. But then also throughout that process, Nate is still evaluating to make sure that that stuff, you know, either needs to be replaced that year or can be pushed back, right? So kind of the second part of it, and then finally, you know, when it's ready to be replaced, he brings it to the governing body to say, okay, this plan is actually going to come to fruition. We're going to need to replace this, and then you guys give the final okay. So there's really kind of three different types of steps within this process in order to get these equipment replacement items accomplished. And you guys are kind of in the loop along the way, which I kind of like.
So what if we don't, what if we push everything here from two thousand twenty-six off a year? Because to me, when I looked at this list, I'm like, none of this looks like it's urgent. It all looks like it can wait. So what if we did that? Wouldn't that like decrease the levy, decrease, give us a buffer in our, our funding for future emergencies, future levies, future necessities? That's my thinking. I, I, I just feel like we just bought a plow. I don't think we need another one. The wood chipper, do we really need a wood chipper? I mean, can we borrow one? This is awfully small. The, I don't even know what a land, a mower.
Yep.
I thought we recently got a mower too, and when I was on the council last time. The mini pumper refurbisher, the Ford Quick Attack pumper ref- I don't even know what that is, so.
Those are for the fire department. So this has, uh, yeah, it has a fire department. The big ones are the fire trucks and our plow trucks are the big ticket items. So for, for snowplows, we have six snowplows. One of them's brand new, just got delivered. One of them's fifteen years old. That's the one that's getting replaced, so. And the longer we push them off, yeah, there is savings year to year, but the prices go up each year too, so it's not a dollar for dollar savings.
I thought we only had two plow drivers.
No, we have eight plow drivers, nine when I help. We have five single axles, one backup single axle, four cul-de-sac trucks. We got a hundred and thirty-five miles of center line of road that we plow. It takes about eight to ten hours to do a plow, so.
And the longer that we hold on to something that's fifteen years old, there's the potential for breakage
More breakdown.
and costly repairs and
We sometimes can get more money when we sell it, if we sell it while it's still got some life into it, so it's, it's a balancing act. We try and review this every year. If we can push it back and save some money, we do, so. That's why I think this one was actually planned for a couple of years ago, and we've been pushing it back. The wood chipper was planned for twenty-twelve when I started working here. We've been pushing that back. We're actually going to probably do a recommendation for a forestry head instead. That's an attachment that goes on the Bobcat. You don't have to actually physically manhandle a brush. You can just grind it up with the Bobcat. It's a lot safer and more efficient.
Essentially a large stump grinder or brush, brush hog?
Yep, pretty much, yep. So I, I, and all this money's been saved. It's, we're not asking for additionally. We've already been saving for this in our planning schedule, so it's sitting in a fund right now, waiting to be used. We don't have to bond for any of this equipment. It's been planned since the last time it was purchased, so. But there is savings if we can push it back, and we try and do that whenever we can, but sometimes you, a couple of years ago, we pushed the plow trucks back and they went up eighty thousand dollars in one year, and we did not save that money. We lost out on that, so.
So my other question is, these two Fords on here, they're fire equipment?
Correct.
So how come they're not on the fire department budget? Cause I thought they had big equipment, their vehicles were on their own budget, and I might be wrong, but
Nope, there's
That was my assumption, so explain this to me.
They're in here as well. There's a, there's a line item in the fire department for a equipment replacement. So they, they take a chunk of money out of their budget to put into this. It's kind of mixed into one big balance, but we separate what we have to pay in there between the departments.
Each, each one of those departments have their own equipment replacement line item within it, so Nate's parks has a line item within it that has equipment replacement charges. His street department has it, and then the building inspection department also has an equipment replacement line item, so.
Yeah, but then isn't this duplicated? I mean
This is just what we're going to spend it on, or once it comes time to
This is just a graph pulling everything together into one spot, showing
Okay.
Correct, correct, yep.
I got it, I got it.
You got to remember, in today's fire service, they jump eighteen percent every year.
I know, and I know their trucks are all
And they're out two years or better to get them.
Got it.
When you order them nowadays.
So. That's all I have. If anybody has any other questions on that or anything else?
No. That's good. I appreciate, appreciate the fact that you assess every piece of equipment and get the best life out of it and work the balancing act that if we can save it for longer than we can, it saves them money, or sell it at the best selling point. So I do appreciate it. Like you said, you took the wood chipper from twenty-twelve and pushed it all the way to
Yeah.
today.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
All right, we're running up against a little bit of a time crunch, but I wanted to just touch on general government section of your budget. So again, that captures council, city administration, election, finance, assessing, legal, government buildings and risk management. Are there any questions, I guess, right off the top that we can answer for you in relation to those budgets?
What page?
This is just going to be
Page eleven on the, well, that's for the administration on eleven.
Kind of taking a big chunk here. It's going to start on page, uh, we can just do page five, really, and under general government. I think the big takeaways, again, are a fifteen percent increase to your city administration department. Again, that's primarily going to be your salary and wages, that eight percent, and the budget mod- modules for Civic Plus. A five hundred and twenty-five percent increase for your elections. Obviously, that's a little misleading because it's an every other year type deal. So that goes from, you know, four thousand, which is just going to be the equipment lease essentially from the county up to the full operation of your elections, which is now budgeted at twenty-five thousand. Finance, again, is going up six percent. Again, that's primarily just going to be the wages. Assessing is going to stay flat at sixty-three thousand five hundred. Your legal costs bumping up, again, just kind of looking at history and what we're forecasting for the first five months of that contract. Then for two thousand twenty-six, increasing that five percent or ten thousand dollars. Government buildings, again, that's kind of, uh, your, your cleaning, your, your garbage, your electricity, all, all that kind of things for your government buildings. And then under risk management, again, increasing that by twenty-two percent based upon that mandated Minnesota paid leave program with the state, which we're still trying to kind of iron our, iron out and get our arms around as far as how that's going to be implemented, so. Are there any questions on the general government department budgets?
Well, I have questions. Why are elections like ten thousand dollars more than they were in twenty-four? What's the increase in the cost, that extra ten thousand?
Yep, so that's a good question. So essentially, back in two thousand twenty-four, there was a little bit of a issue recruiting election judges. So looking back at that, we're going to, we're going to do some research and figure out a good, a good wage to raise that to moving into two thousand twenty-six. So that'll help retain and help with recruitment of election judges. And there is some overtime that actually was recorded in administration. That actually is an election expense, so. So all Carrie's time actually gets coded to administration, but if you broke it down by what her function was, that particular time set, it, it goes to elections, so.
I got it.
Yep.
And then for the city administration, the COLA was eight percent, but why is the increase fifteen percent? What else is included in that?
Yep, though essentially, we added a line item for the Civic Plus modules, again, which we're
Oh, that's in there?
Yep, which we're still, again, when everything is kind of set on that, we'll distribute those to the actual departments that are benefiting from those modules. But as we're still researching it and trying to get our arms around what modules are needed, they've all just kind of been captured within the city administration department.
Okay, and I'm guessing the big increase in the planning and zoning, is that part of, landform part of that, or?
Yep, that's a good question. So going down to our So going down to our community development, um, section, we have planning and zoning and building inspection. Planning and zoning is actually going down eight percent. And one of the ways that we, again, cushion that levy increase into two thousand twenty-six is we said, okay, we've had some, kind of some challenges recruiting a community development director. So, again, knowing that there's some challenges, let's hold off into two thousand twenty-six and only fund that position at two-thirds. So again, um, if we only fund it at two-thirds, that means there's a decrease in that actual department of eight percent. The building inspection, again, there, we're fully funding all the positions, and then that's where that eight percent comes in. So in total, it only increases that department by five percent.
Okay. All right, now down to engineering. It's a ten thou- it's a, a little over a ten thousand dollar increase. So far, we've only spent seven thousand, so why is it twenty thousand? I mean, it was in twenty-three and twenty-four, it was under ten thousand. So far this year, we've not even reached ten thousand, but they've got it for twenty thousand.
Yep, it's a goo- it's a good question, yep. So if you're basically just going to base the two thousand twenty-six budget on the actuals of twenty-four and twenty-five, or twenty-three and twenty-four, you would budget it at ten thousand. Um, but again, depending upon how some of these projects that we have in the pipeline are going, a lot of the engineering bill that comes in, we actually can bill back to specific, um, other departments and, and funds. Um, but there are things that we can't. Um, one of them is that water and, water project, uh, that Matt is looking to get bonding dollars for. So any kind of work done with that, or any kind of work that, you know, that's outside of a project that we can't bill back to. So again, just leaving ourselves a little bit of wiggle room with that.
Okay, makes sense.
The only other, I guess, department we haven't really touched on is your civic events, and that is your Booster Day fireworks. So again, that, we're maintaining that at sixty-five hundred dollars. Essentially, I think we tell the fireworks folks that that's the budget we have to work with, and then they kind of work within the confines of that to produce the show. Any other questions kind of on the expenditure side? We have a little bit of time, I'd like to touch on the revenue side of things too before we adjourn. But are there any questions on the general fund expenditure side of things? Okay. So if we kind of just go down our expenditure, our revenue side of your general fund, again, the biggest component of your general fund revenue is your property taxes, right? So that's the one that's increasing by six percent. But again, if you add up all your levies, right, that'll actually be on the tax statement that your constituents get, it'll be three point eight percent increase, right? Your franchise tax, that's a monthly, uh, cash receipt that the city gets for franchise fees administered by Mid-Continent. So anyone who has Mid-Continent pays a little bit of money, a little bit of additional money to Mid-Continent, and they turn around and pay the city. Again, that's essentially based upon the amount of users they basically have or subscriptions. So again, we're averaging right in that fifty-seven thousand dollar mark. Um, payment in lieu of taxes, again, that's the nexus agreement that was signed a couple of years ago, that essentially outlines that instead of paying taxes, they pay twenty-five thousand dollars, um, to the city. Again, that's mostly used to, um, cushion any kind of public service or, um, public safety, um, increases for that entity. There's where that two hundred thousand dollars in fund balance comes from. Again, that's what we've accumulated over the years, or potential savings or savings that we've had, and we say now that we can use some of that in order to cushion the levy. I'm gonna make this a little bigger so you can see. No, I can't really guess. What are those, some other big ones? Building inspection, uh, permits, again, these are all the permits that our building inspection folks do. And just basing it on kind of what we're anticipating and what has happened in the past, we're increasing, we're increasing that by twelve percent. State aid, um, again, that's an allocation basically from the, uh, state of Minnesota for your roads. So each year, we get two different payments from them, and we're anticipating that being a twelve percent increase or two hundred and sixty-three thousand. What else do we have?
So when you anticipate, does that usually come to fruition, or do you end up getting less, or do you end up getting more?
Yeah, good, very good question. So recently, obviously, the state has had some pretty big surpluses, but as we all know, now they're facing some deficits. So, you know, I don't have a crystal ball as to how that's gonna affect streets, but I know in the past that the first thing that they usually tou- touch is LGA, which is local government aid. And I guess the city doesn't actually receive any of those dollars, so that's one benefit of not even getting any of those. But it is somewhere on the pecking order of things that they could adjust to make their budget work, so. But it hasn't happened to us in recent years, so, but it's a good question. Inner governmental charges, again, this is a, this is a, the line item where the general fund is actually billing back these other funds for services provided. So for example, when the city took over the arena, the general fund can bill that arena fund money in order to service that entity. And again, so you've got the water fund, the sewer fund, the arena, um, the EDA and the HRA, essentially getting services by your general fund staff, and then it's billed and received here. Another big line item, I guess, is your interest earnings. Interest rates continue to kind of stay, I guess, relatively stable right now. And again, that's just a forecasted number, because we don't know what interest rates are gonna do in two thousand twenty-six. But again, looking at kind of the history of what our portfolio has produced, we're comfortable raising that up fifty percent or a hundred, to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So again, you add up all those revenues, and that's what funds all those expenditures, again, that we had discussed previously. So seven point four million dollars in revenue then balances your expenditure budget to zero. With that, are there any other questions or concerns on anything that we can answer?
So overall, we're looking at a three point eight percent increase?
That is correct. So one of the things is, is I put the back of the book actually on page one of your book. So all that stuff taken into account, we are proposing to raise your levy three point eight percent. So going from the six million three hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred to six million six hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred, or three point eight. So then the next question usually is, asshole, okay, so what does that mean for my property taxes? Well, for the city portion, right, if all your values stayed the same, right, your house value and every value in the city stays the same, your property taxes would go up three point eight percent. But we all know that that's not how it works, right? There's other factors involved, right? It's what your value's doing in conjunction with the city as a whole, right? But on average, your constituents would see a three point eight percent increase to just the city line item within your budget, or within their tax statement, what they see, wish they would see in November.
Traditionally, I believe we've usually tried to get between two and three.
Correct, yep. I've got a nice chart that I can show you. So these are our levy trends from two thousand fourteen, when I showed up. Two thousand fourteen was that standing room only meeting that we had. It was, I'm not sure how many weeks I was on the job, but it was basically a recalibration of your levy in order to get it so we could maintain this, you know, modest increases as we, as we go. So we've averaged anywhere from, we'll say, point nine percent increases now to three point eight percent. With obviously this high watermark was just to recalibrate your levy, and that was basically to start funding for the, the debt service on the water and sewer project on sixty-five.
And I know you don't have crystal ball, but if we did the three point eight percent for the next year, would that be a trend that would keep going, keep increasing, or?
Right.
Actually, yeah, actually, one of the drivers this year was the union negotiation and kind of, um, the wages that's been talked about this evening. Those are in a three-year contract, so it'll be going down to three percent for the next two years, so we'll be able to stabilize a little bit from there, short of unknown expenses coming in, you know.
Yeah, I think the, the long-term strategy, obviously, was to have a one-time market rate adjustment for the salaries, and then get back in line with what a standard inflation would be, so that's gonna be in two thousand twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And then using two hundred thousand dollars in fund balance, but slowly whittling our need off of that, so whittling our way off of it, so going from two hundred to one seventy-five, and, and, and all, all at the same time, keeping the levy increases to that zero to three percent, I think has been the overall strategy since I've been here, so.
So we, in the future, would be, we can consider this a one-time, and in the future, will be reduced down to?
Yeah, I mean, each year kind of brings its own challenges, but the one big challenge this year was the, the wage correction and then, but, um, I think the goal is to keep it in that zero to three percent each year, so.
So if we put off that snowplow for one year, would it be, would that bring it down to closer to three percent?
The mechanically, no, but one of the things is, is that transfer, that equipment replacement transfer that we would do, right? You, you would have to reduce that down in order to actually affect your levy.
I'm just thinking about this.
I know fifteen years on a plow truck is a significant amount of time. I think that they do a pretty honest consideration of where that vehicle's at and how much life is left in it, that, um, I would defer to them on that, on their expertise on that one.
Okay. So. Just wanna go over one more slide here, let me get out of here quick, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So we'll go back to this budget levy and timeline. So again, we're at, uh, July fourteenth, where we're kind of discussing all the inputs that went into this budget model. We had presentations kind of by your department heads and leads. The next item then, within our budget process, is our September eighth meeting, where we will consider the adoption of the preliminary, I should say, two thousand twenty-six budget and levy. And then, again, depending upon how that goes, um, the one thing to note on that is the levy can no longer be increased at that point, but only decreased moving into December, so. But that's kind of the timeline, and obviously, Matt and I are available anytime that anyone wants to sit down and go through any of these budgets in a little bit more in-depth, we'll, we're happy to, uh, to do that as well, so.
Okay.
With that, are there any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, I have a question. When we talk about this two hundred thousand dollar general fund transfer, you know, to cover some of the costs of this levy, how much money, is, is that the max we can go?
Another good question. So essentially, we set, we set that based upon, if I just kind of look at, uh, if we just wanna look at the fund balance. I'm just gonna bring it up, cause it's just easier. So one of the things on the, the timeline is essentially completing your audit. And that gives us the starting point for what your fund balance is. So we completed your two thousand twenty-four audit, and the audited figure was a five point two million dollar fund balance. At the end of two thousand twenty-five, then, we have to estimate, cause we don't know how we're gonna end. But given that we're planning on using two hundred thousand dollars in twenty-five as well, we'll just reduce it down and say that at the end of twenty-five, we're, we're thinking we'll have about five million dollars in fund balance. That's where your policy then comes into play, is our policy says that we need to keep anything, we need to keep forty percent of next year's budgeted expenditures. So again, the two thousand twenty-six potential use of fund balance is one point three million dollars. But again, I think the long-term strategy is to use two hundred thousand, and then just slowly whittle our way off of it until all that excess fund balance is kind of used up, right? Because as we're increasing our, um, expenditures, then the requirement for fund balance increases as well.
And then just a reminder too, on this twenty twenty-six category right here, if you go, if you see a number over here like forty-seven hundred dollars, you can find that number on this side, you know, to give you a little more details to what that number's all about. If you have any questions on that, but again, we're available. If you wanna sit down and chat and dig into this a little further, we're certainly available for that, so.
Yeah, this fund balance item can get a little confusing, so if you wanna sit down and, and discuss a little bit more in-depth, we can.
Any other questions?
No?
Thanks for putting all this together, Mike.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Entertained the motion to adjourn? Make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None, meeting's closed.